Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, January 24, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. The clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharlin.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith. Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Ms. Strasburger, chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belzuber, Brasilia, Brazil. Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. What I seek is a city and a country culture of excellence. That means optimality and seeking optimality in information and intelligence, no matter what the source, whether Democratic Party, Republican Party, independent, no matter what. But especially in securing vote by voter verification for whom and uncensored freedom of speech, particularly when it comes to voting, which I view constitutionally as an exercise of speech. And since 2015, Pennsylvania fortress, I mean, United States fortress idea for each one of the 50 states. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council and Allegheny County government is the vote. And so with information over misinformation and especially over disinformation, by which I mean information as claims to fact verified by one offline print source, one person in person interview and one online minimum. Misinformation are claims, in my view, to facts which are unverified, Allegheny's claim to 30% decrease in Pittsburgh homicides. I ask him to support that. And disinformation claims to fact which are intentionally and unverified to mislead. Now, Sarah Anamorado claims 51% of the vote for Allegheny County Executive is disinformation. I publicly challenge SI to physically go over to the Allegheny County Election Division, which she oversees, and request to verify her own vote for Allegheny County Executive. Has her vote been misplaced? Has it been misapplied? The request will be denied. The ACED forbids vote by voter verification for whom. So SI's claim to verification of her own vote and of 51% of the vote for Allegheny County Executive, in our view, is invalid misinformation. Ms. Gross at Lawrenceville, in my view, Warwickian, badass team, Anamorado BFF, excited about access to the ballot nomination paper signature process, but I think that's misplaced because the ACED/PA State Election Board combination do not permit matching a signature on a ballot nomination paper to the signature on a Pennsylvania state idea. These signatures could be anybody's. And so this is misinformation, it's misleading, and the Gross-Anamorado approach to this that you all share is, in our view, misinformation and invalid and illegal.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. Here's the situation. One, an excellent school was closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. Three, it should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. Four, it must be torn down. Five, parks and trees Pittsburgh funding used to make it a green space. Six, the residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for this particular detriment? We, the people of Bon Air, welcome a green space to replace this detrimental building after having three youths taken out of the building in handcuffs and full first fled. It shows the escalation of the problem there. Former Mayor Paduto was selected to be a member of a global group. It is clear that he disgraced himself with initiatives and actions that call into question his loyalty to our city, state, and county. How dare he appoint a board that says the detrimental school building should remain? They do not care about the property value and quality of life issues that harm the residents and property owners in Bon Air. This was read at my husband's funeral. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. He knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace. A first responder of Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Katie Guarnaccia. Katie Guarnaccia, Guarnaccia. Okay, that moves us to comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
Good morning, council. My name is Sam Schmidt. I am a resident of Bellevue and an advocate and outreach worker for Pittsburgh's unhoused population. First, I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to council member Bobby Wilson for his dedicated efforts in addressing zoning laws to enhance the possibility of homeownership in his district. Your commitment to fostering a more accessible and affordable housing market is commendable and has undoubtedly contributed to making the dream of owning a home a little more attainable for folks in the community. Thank you also to those of you who supported this effort of making more affordable housing available to more of our Pittsburgh neighbors. I also want to extend my appreciation to council members Gross, Warwick, and Coghill for other innovative problem solving approaches to trying to create enough shelter space for all that need it in the city of Pittsburgh. Your creative problem solving is playing a critical role in providing shelter and safety for more individuals, and I'm thankful for your efforts in meeting the needs of our community members. It's still important to recognize the broader issue at hand, the need to eliminate housing as a mere commodity, and instead prioritize the creation of affordable and accessible housing for all or socialized housing for all. Housing is a basic human right, and your collective efforts in this regard are a step toward reducing poverty, poor health outcomes, and the risk of homelessness. As we acknowledge the progress made, it is crucial that we continue working collaboratively to address the challenges that still exist. By fostering an environment where housing is viewed as a necessity rather than a luxury, we can build a community that thrives on inclusivity and ensures that no one is left without a roof over their head. Around the country, black communities are paying, on average, 44% of their income toward rent, which continues to climb. Hispanic renters pay, on average, 48% of their income just for shelter. Many of our unhoused neighbors are working full time, some have multiple jobs. I urge City Council to persist in their efforts to implement policies and initiatives that prioritize the well-being of our residents. Let's continue to work creatively and collaboratively towards a future where housing is accessible, affordable, and viewed as a fundamental right for all members of our community. U.S. council members have the ability to set that precedent and lead the change that American cities are crying out for. Thank you for your time, energy, and commitment to making Pittsburgh a more inclusive and accessible community. I look forward to what we can accomplish for our neighbors this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to speak? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And that takes us to the Finance and Law Committee chaired by myself.
Bill Number 10, Resolution to authorize and direct the incurring of nonelectoral debt through the issuance of a series of general obligation bonds of the city of Pittsburgh in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $62,495,000.
We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this deferred paper? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation on Bill 10. Moves us on to Bill 25.
Bill 25, Ordinance Amending Title I Administrative Article IX Boards' Commissions and Authorities, Chapter 177a Equal Opportunity Review Commission in order to clarify the scope of EORC review.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
With discussion?
With discussion.
I think there's folks here to talk about this.
Do we have?
I'm not sure if I did that right.
Motion to, yeah, second with discussion. We have, I believe, we have Felicity Williams and Matt Stidl here to discuss this if they're Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is it up to me to ask? Okay, so Chief Williams, thank you for being here. Could you explain a little bit what's going on here?
Absolutely. So I've mentioned this a little bit before to you guys, but we have a procurement modernization initiative that we are going through our procurement legislation policies process to ensure that the city is creating opportunities where we have our business opportunities that are accessible and equitable to all of our businesses in the city of Pittsburgh. And as part of that review, before we would want to recommend any new policies or legislation, we want to make sure that we review existing policies and legislation and how they are being implemented. In the process of that review, we realized that there were some issues with some sections of the city code not being consistent with the sections in which they are placed, some language, some erroneous placed language. And so in order to be able to implement and utilize those sections, in particular the one that you see here, where we are trying to change the language around sanctions related to compliance or noncompliance with the Equal Opportunity Review Commission, minority women, veteran, LGBTQIA participation goals in there, there was the word residency misplaced in that. And so we wanted to remove the word residency, not to remove a residency requirement, but so that the ordinance, the requirements of that ordinance made sense there. So I can walk you through like the two examples here for us.
If you could, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So Section 1, where we want to remove the word residency, and instead it would just say meet the requirements of Chapter 161. So Chapter 161 is, in our ordinance governing contract, contracting the city in general. And so anything that falls within that, that is, if you look at 177a 01, the purpose authority of the EORC, it talks about how their role is to review and approve all contracts for compliance with 161, just 161, not any particular provision of it. And so we want that to be consistent, to be read together. In Section 2, that you see here, we're offering, we are proposing to remove the word residency, it specifically says shall be around noncompliance with the residency requirement set forth in the chapter. Chapter 177a is about minority women, business, LGBTQIA, veteran-owned business participation. It's not restricted to residency. And so we want it to just be the requirements of the chapter encompassing to actually be the intent of the chapter, not to be restricting.
Would you be willing to send us those examples? I unfortunately, I always struggle, I wish I could read that instead of hearing it. I'm just, my brain doesn't work very well and spoken word as well as reading, so.
Sure, no, but this was in the legislation that we submitted.
Oh, was it? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, yeah, it's written in here in the legislation that we submitted.
Okay.
Any other questions that folks have for me?
Yes. Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, a question. You know, as part of the review, has there been like, you know, like an analysis, you know, that, that kind of show like the disparities like in procurement? If you kind of talk about, you know, what kind of inspired, you know, the administration to take this step and then, you know, what are the disparities in procurement that we're trying to tackle?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we're really appreciative to have received the support and authorization from City Council the end of last year to amend and extend our contract with a consultant to help us develop the RFP scope of work in some of this review for us to conduct a disparity study for the city. To your point, why? Well, because there has not been one in almost, I believe, about 30 years, it's definitely over 20 years. Industry standard is for those to be done about every five years. And so this is under the, the disparity study is under the umbrella of procurement modernization as well. You're welcome.
Any further questions for Chief Williams? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you, chief. Appreciate you.
Really appreciate it.
You're answering the questions.
I vote for Bill 10.
Bill 10, so noted. That moves us on to Bill 26.
Bill 26, Resolution Ratifying the 2024 through 2028 International Association of Firefighters' Local One Collective Bargaining Agreement.
We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Bill 27.
Bill 27, Resolution Amending Resolution 858 of 2023 entitled, "Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public Business of the City of Pittsburgh and For Meeting the Debt Charges thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2024, so as to reopen the 2024 Operating Budget to Accommodate Changes in the Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Fire, the Department of Finance, and the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service in Direct Response to the Ratified Collective Bargaining Agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local One."
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Motion to hold, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to hold is approved. We will hold for a cable cast public hearing. Moves us to Bill 28.
Bill 28, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 865 of 2023, Providing for an Agreement or Agreements in a Lease or Leases by and Between the City of Pittsburgh and First Vehicle Services, a Trans-DAF Company pursuant to which first vehicle was furnished all work and services needed to manage and maintain the city's vehicle fleet. Costs shall not exceed $78,349,343 over a six-year period.
I will, I will note that this is a, a technical amendment fixing a JDE number. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say.
I did have one. I hate to do this, but I did have one, just outstanding question that I want to ask.
Do we have, let's see here, Billy of Patrick Cornell?
It really just deals with the contract, so not the, not the number. What's that?
We'll see.
Yeah. It's real simple, Patrick, if you want.
Sure. Good morning, Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
This may have been, you know, something that you went over before, someone else that was here, but I just wanted to ask a question to refresh my memory. So if the, if the first vehicle gets backed up with maintenance, you know, what is the, you know, what are the thresholds that we have in place to understand that? And then, and then what are the backup places that we have to send vehicles?
Sure, so I don't, I don't have the exact percentages and performance metrics off the top of my head. As I was telling the councilperson, the prior contract is about 400 pages long, but there is an entire section of performance metrics and guarantees. I do not know the answer.
Who monitors that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Who monitors that?
OMB, the fleet team, so it'd be the fleet manager.
Okay. And then in the case that, you know, the numbers come back where they're, you know, for simply to say they're backed up, what, you know, what are the other places that we send vehicles to?
That is a good question, and I do not know the answer.
Okay, can you follow me on email? Thanks.
Any further questions? Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, just a follow-up to Councilman Wilson. We're paying $78 million, so there isn't a backup, correct? I mean, they are obligated under contract to take care of our vehicles, and didn't you put a timeframe on that?
I, so I, you're right, I'm unfamiliar with the situation in which that would come up, but we always need to be prepared for a hypothetical.
I think that we incorporated a timeframe on that, didn't we?
I can look into it.
Yeah, yeah, I think part of the original legislation said 30 days or something that they had to correct, fix, whatever.
I don't think that would be in the legislation, but that could be a provision in the agreement that we're working through.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? I want to note that our office asked some questions ahead of time and got answers before this. I just wanted to state publicly that we asked about if we do not have to spend the full allocation, what happens to those budget dollars? They do indeed roll forward to the next year, so thank you for that answer and that, for the same service. And, you know, what is built in to ensure that we have a high level of service? And in a 400-page-long contract, there are many performance metrics, turnaround service times, et cetera, to ensure that, you know, we continue to receive better and better service from this, from this vendor. So thank you for those answers. I wanted to state publicly what we had asked and heard back. Let's see here, are there any further, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you very much. That takes us to Bill 29.
Bill 29, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution Number 674, 2022, effective date December 2, 2022, in order to rescind the sale.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 30.
Bill 30, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through K, 268 Lombard Street, 2431 Wiley Avenue, 746 Clarissa Street, 4918 Rosetta Street, 0 Isoline Street, 123 Overbeck Street, 149 Henderson Street, 1400 Tumbo Street, 510 Stratmore Avenue, 512 Stratmore Avenue, and 514 Stratmore Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 31.
Bill 31, Resolution Approving Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Sideyard Program, Items A through N, 2825 Webster Avenue, 2823 Webster Avenue, 5163 Hillcrest Street, 415 North Graham Street, 229 Shetland Avenue, 6506 Meadow Street, 7042 Kedron Street, 1050 Wheeler Street, 0 Oakwood Street, 5874 Douglas Street, 56, 516 Cedarhurst Street, 3003 Zephyr Avenue, and 419 Marshall Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, thank you. It did come to my attention that the 229 Shetland Avenue was different from all the other properties. It was the owner that actually lives in Morroville, and I noticed all the other owners live actually next door to the property. You know, so I just wanted to, just make a note of that. I'd be just curious to that one person's intention, but.
What are your wishes? Would you like to hold the bill? Would you like to strike this, make a verbal amendment to strike this property for the time being to investigate? Or would you like to?
Yeah, I would like to do that.
Okay, so you can make a verbal amendment to strike the exact.
Yeah, I'd like to make a verbal amendment to strike the 229 Shetland Avenue just to do further investigation.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the, that's affirmative recommend, or that is a, the amendment passes. We will make that change and it'll be noted. All those in favor of the bill as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, affirmative recommendation. Thank you, Councilman, for your due diligence. That moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion for, to approve invoices?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us on to, invoices, that moves us on to P, interdepartmental transfers, seeing no interdepartmental transfers, it moves us on to P cards. I will note that we do need to waive the rules of council for P cards. Similar to the last couple of weeks, IMP has two purchases to Twilio that add up to over $5,000. They're working through the contracting process, but in the meantime, they're receiving weekly invoices. And there are, you know, two weeks' worth of transactions on this report.
Motion to waive the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so amendment, sorry, we have, we have approved the waiving of rules for P cards. Is there a motion to approve P cards?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
P cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Bill 32, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh, the Director of Public Works and Director of Finance to Enter Into an Easement Agreement or Agreements with Duquesne Light Company to Provide, Install, Use, Own, Operate, Maintain, Repair, Renew, and Finally Remove Two-Pole Anchors Located Upon City Property in Shenley Park.
Motion to approve, very brief discussion.
Discussion, is there a second?
Second.
Just wanted to note here, this is existing infrastructure, but that there is a waiver form in here, this is along Panther Hollow in Shenley Park, and we do have the waiver form that the utilities need in order to do development, so to speak, in a public park. So, because it's existing infrastructure, but anyway, just nice to see, so.
Thank you. Your, your legislation coming to fruition in real time. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill 33.
Bill 33, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an easement with Duquesne Light Company to provide a permanent easement for vegetation management on city-owned property.
Motion to approve?
Oh, yeah, so moved. Motion to approve, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill 34, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Program to Aid Citizens Enterprise for Technical Assistance Services to Nonprofits Awarded Neighborhood Economic Development Grants in Need of Capacity Building for a Sum Not to Exceed $32,700 for the Payment of the Costs Thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 41.
Bill 41, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VII Business Licensing, Article V Trade Occupations, Chapter 751, Contractor Registration by Adding Language Defining Contractor in Construction and Updating References to Both Entities Across Chapter.
Motion to approve, discussion.
Second.
With discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. I want to highlight that this bill is one that we passed, I believe, a couple of years ago, and this is an amendment to the, to further defining contractor. And so what that does is it just creates more accountability of how a contractor, you know, hires subcontractors and everything for larger, especially larger jobs that we see across the city, and also increases the, you know, the safeguards around the, I guess, the consumer or the developer or the affordable housing developer. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Intergovernmental Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill 19, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Act 537 Plan Update Special Study for Brentwood Borough. Sewage Facilities Plan for Act Five Thirty-Seven Plan Update Special Study for Brentwood Borough at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve. So moved, or second?
Second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill Twenty.
Bill Twenty, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Thirty-One Thirty-Three Forbes Avenue at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill Twenty-One.
Bill Twenty-One, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Thirty Forty-five Sarah Street at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill Twenty-Two.
Bill Twenty-Two, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located Along Grandview Avenue at the Intersections of Augusta Street and Shaler Street, Including the Following Parcel Numbers. Six G Ten, Six G Twelve, Six G Sixteen, Six G Eighteen, Six G Twenty, Six G Twenty-two, Six G Thirty, Six G Thirty-one, Six G Thirty-two, Six G Thirty-three, Six G Thirty-four, Six G Thirty-five, Six G Thirty-six, Six G Thirty-nine, Six G Forty, Six G Forty-two, Six G Forty-three, Six G Forty-six, Six G Fifty-one, Six G Sixty-seven, Six G Sixty-eight, Six G Sixty-nine, Six G Seventy at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill Twenty-Three.
Bill Twenty-Three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Works and the Director of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into Permanent Easements with the Pennsylvania American Water Company for the Installation, Maintenance, Repair, Operation, and Removal of a Water Line on City-Owned Property at the End of Manuka Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill Twenty-four.
And Bill Twenty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into a Data Sharing Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Each Party to Share Certain Data with the Other at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That brings us to our meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold its regular meeting on Tuesday, January thirtieth at ten a.m., and a standing committee meeting on Wednesday, January thirty-first at ten a.m., respectively. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. The speaker registration will close at nine a.m. on the day of the meeting. Do we have any comments or questions for members?
Madam Chair, this Councilwoman Rose, I apologize.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, I apologize. May I register an aye vote for the first paper that I missed, Bill Ten?
So noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.